Hello, everybody. It's six o'clock on October 23rd. At this time I'd like to call to order the special public meeting from six to seven to discuss the fire department's budget requests. And at this time if you will stand in the meeting for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us declare the United States of America, the universal republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great justice for all.
Okay. So, in the past, in the middle of the budget discussions, there's usually we get to the end and there's a fire discussion. So, we figured we'd start this and get this discussed early on instead of at the last hour of the year or something like that. Because after the budget, we still have the contract negotiations with the budgeted amounts. I do not know if the liaisons met again with the fire department since our last town board meeting?
We have not.
We have not. So, at this time, the budget that the board received, the updated one, had the adjustments with an amount between what was originally budgeted in the tentative budget and the request that was submitted at the last meeting, last budget meeting. I don't know. After the last meeting, I was a little concerned with the direction that I, I'm not sure where the fire departments are going. I know there's been conversations earlier in the year about some things that have been discussed about the entire future. And what I stated at the last meeting was, I didn't think it would be right to throw money. And I'm saying that, not that it's throwing, but at problems. Because I've talked with many of the members of the fire departments, Byron South, Byron Elbow, Stafford, Virgin, et cetera. You're all facing the same things. But, I thought that there was a, the looking towards a solution for both the fire departments and then the, ultimately, the benefit of the town would reap those benefits as well. So, I don't know what anybody's comments on their concerns are about that. But, that's the direction I would like to see. And I think back in the summer, a couple of members of each of the fire departments said that that was the direction that they would be going, or they would like to see. And as one of the town board members who's not here said, there's a lot of work to go, whether it's merging, consolidating. There's all kinds of terms to use. I don't know, I'm not a fire person, none of us are. But, the jump on, from where we were this past year in the budget and what was initially, you know, the dream budget, there's a big difference. And that burden comes on the, on the burden, comes down to the tax payer, okay? So, that's what our responsibility is to make sure that we're getting bang for the buck for our residents. So, a better understanding from what you want. I mean, we've gotten, everyone got a copy of what their budgets were? It's like apples and oranges reading the budget requests or the tentative budgets for each of you. If anybody wants to speak at this point. We plugged in for the preliminary budget. We plugged in for the combined total for fire protection, which does include the ambulance service, okay? Which I know that we have a, the town has a contract with the ambulance for, I'm not sure how many years it was?
It's a five year.
It's a five year, thirty or thirty-five thousand, was it?
Thirty thousand, five years. And I believe, let me if I'm wrong, that's a separate line. I believe that was for the purchase of the ambulance of the Byron Fire Department. It's not to be construed with the fire tax together.
Okay.
Am I correct?
And how do I understand who you are? We're talking, we're talking three things here. Byron, South Byron, ambulance. So, there's, we get in there.
But we're not.
We have to be. That's what was, that's last year's budget. That's what was accepted, that was agreed upon.
That was what the contract was. There's a budget, there's a contract.
The ambulance is a separate entity.
Okay, fair enough.
Than the first one. So, that should not be added in to the South Byron and Byron's budget line.
Well, we could subtract out, but it goes on the tax levy as a whole.
It should.
Yeah, it does.
What's that?
I think it does.
I'm aware of my book that's in front of me coming from our bookkeeper. And I don't have a copy of the tax bill, how it was, but I think it's just fire protection.
I'm pretty sure it's fire protection.
Is how it lumps up. So, that's how everything's calculated for the budgeting process. And there are two different, there's several different things that go on here every year. There's the budget, and then there's the contract. And, I'm looking at the dollar amounts. And I would like to see a justi, not justification. I would like to move towards solutions to the problems, which is increased taxes, better staffed fire departments. I mean, that's what everybody wants. How does the town of Byron and our fire departments get to that? That's the question that the residents want to know too. And, you know, which I've had conversations with most everybody in the room at this point, one-on-one. So, I'm asking the people that are here in the room that have had these conversations one-on-one, what we like to see is how to move forward in the direction that you've indicated. How's that?
Just to go with that, just a little discussion I've had with the fire department. I think as far as the staffing and the camaraderie that I've seen just in the last couple of years, that it's better than it's ever been. And as far as separating the two fire departments, I'm an advocate to try to get the two forces to make one. But, just the legal issue, I don't think that's gonna be, in the next few years, it's gonna happen. But, I can just, I can tell you, just watching what they've been doing, their staffing, they're doing, they're better than they were two years ago. And then, I just would like to bring up a point, you know, and I know you was a, that was just throwing money to something. But, if one life is saved because of this, it's worth every penny. You know, that's just what I guess, on my opinion. You know, you look at their volunteers, they're doing what they can do on their own dime, you know? So, as far as the money thing, if we can afford it in a town, I don't think there's any, I'm just trying to think, it's worth every penny. I don't, I don't like it.
I agree with you a hundred percent, Martin. Dollars should not come between property and life. And the volunteers that serve this community without pay, go out there every day, every night, doesn't matter what the weather is, holidays, weekends, not paid for it, giving our time. I think that's a big plus towards what our goal is. We're here for the community, but if we don't get what we need for the community, how are we supposed to protect you?
One of the things, financially, the solution may be one way. Personnel-wise, it may be the other. Because tradition has it that when you merge two together, you don't get twice what you had. You lose people in that merger. It's the way it works, whether it's business or volunteers.
Yeah, I agree. Because I did go, I did sit in a couple meetings and tried to get the whole thing merged. In my personal opinion, someday I think we will be able to get that. If we're talking in the next year or two, it just isn't gonna happen.
Now, we had a meeting the other night with MRI, also working with the Fire Advisory Board to do things differently, more efficiently, so that not every department has to have every piece of equipment. Town has an aerial unit. BRI has one, the city has one. We don't need five of them in the county at a million and a half dollars apiece. One of the things is, I've got a capital expenditure that I think is less than we're gonna need. Our 2015 pumper was four hundred and fifty-seven thousand. The city just bought one a couple of years ago. It's almost identical to ours at eight hundred and eighty-two thousand. And they tell us to prepare for 1.2 million for the next one. I don't, if we don't get headed toward that, how are we gonna do it? We don't wanna have that. And OSHA is having hearings about making us replace our primary pumper every fifteen years rather than every twenty years. So, if that goes through, then in order to have a pumper that meets OSHA, we're gonna have to order it in the near future. There's about a three-year lag on getting a truck.
So, Byron has a pumper? Does South Byron have a pumper?
You need a pumper to be a fire department.
I'm just, you know, I didn't ask for a list of equipment, et cetera, you know? I'm not gonna get into your business. I just want, there's some redundancies, because there's two.
Well, we both have fankers.
Well, within each of the budgets. And, you know, if I misunderstood any of the conversation I've had with any of the firemen, whether you're in a leadership role or you're, just, not just, but a firefighter coming up from, you know, one of the ranks. If I misunderstood what the possibilities were for each of you, I apologize. But, I get, you have to start somewhere to get to the finish line. And, as I said to a couple of you, a couple of you over the course of the last year, actually, conversations have to start now. And all's, I think the board would like to see is if that's the, is free us to help you do that. Because it's gonna be an economic thing for the town and hopefully make things more economically feasible overall. But, it's not, it's not gonna happen overnight. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of things within each of your organizations. There's a lot of things that are outside of your organizations, you know? There's a whole process. But, there's processes that we could follow. And that's where I think that as the town, we step in to help figure out the plan is ultimately for the fire departments and the residents. Because we don't, I don't wanna give up the ser, I mean.
You can't.
I understand that. But, what's the, what's the course, what's five years from now? We've had these conversations. What is your plan for five years?
First of all, in our last meeting, Martin, I think, I don't know if we were there or not, one of our last meetings was, we asked for a projected number. So, we gave our projected numbers of what we were looking for for 2025.
Dollars wise, you mean, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay. But then, one of my final questions was to the board, what does the board want from the fire departments for the residents of Byron? Who makes that decision? What does the town want from the fire departments? We have yet to get an answer.
Perfect. This is, this is, one of our.
Right, right, Martin, this was one of the questions that came up.
So, and so, if I, to the town, ask me that question, come in, ask Martin Diltcher what your question is right now.
So, my question was to the town, to the town board, because the town board makes a decision of where our finances come and how much we get. What does the town board want for the residents of Byron from the fire departments?
That's a good question.
So.
I'm ready to answer it. I'm not, from my perspective.
We've given you our, what we projected money-wise. You asked us for dollar amount, we gave you that. We fulfilled our duties all your life for what we requested you do. So, the final question was, what does the town of Byron want from the fire departments?
Are you talking dollar amount or?
No, no, I'm talking.
Oh, sure.
Well, that's the other question right there. Right there is the other question.
What's that?
Is it money or is it service? And, you know, Steve answered, I think it's both. And for me, for me, I'm looking at the service, what you guys are doing. You guys are, again, stepped up to the service that you had. The dollar amount, you know, and tread lightly, you know, what can the town of Ford, you know, to get there? And again, I can step back to, to me, there's no, you can't put a dollar amount to somebody's life.
No.
Or their house, your house or something. So, the dollar amount thing, that's the tough part, you know? But, on the other hand, as a board member sitting here, you know, we have to go out to the town and, you know, justify what we're, we're giving, I can't even give it, what we're letting the fire department have. And in my personal opinion, I look at these budgets and I can honestly tell you, ain't enough. You know, so that's just, you know, and it's, thank you, everybody that you guys do. It's not enough, there's not enough money in this budget to save my grandchildren's lives that live on the other side of town, just so you know. There's not enough money there. But, you know, what can we do as a town to make sure that the fire department has enough money to, when somebody calls 911, I hope to God that Brian Hickey and Bob Merzak are on the phone figuring out what they gotta do to come save our lives. That's what I have to say.
And that's what our, and that's what our question is. Because we are two steps from standing around the fire with a guitar, singing Boom by God, with Byron and South Byron working together. We have a scene, we work together. Okay? That's, that's that side. Now, the other side is finances. We need this amount of money for our trucks, for our gear, for our firefighters to, one, keep our firefighters safe and protect the town. So, now it's a dollar amount. Well, I don't know if we can afford three hundred. It's not the point. You just said, we're not getting enough for what we should be doing.
I have to ask you this question, Steve. You know, if we do go through and the dollar amount exceeds our budget, we're gonna have to ask the taxpayer, we're gonna have to go raise our taxes, you know? So, and that, are you good with that? And, you know, if we said, hey, next year that, we can't afford this, so our taxes are gonna go up due to the fire department.
Then that's the town.
And you're not just stepping up and saying you're gonna pay two people. Or you don't. But, Steve, let me finish. I'm good with it. To me, it's, you know, whatever they have, I'm, I'm all right with it. I can work a little harder to make sure that you guys get there. I do. So, if your taxes are raised next year for that, and it goes up due to the fire department, are you good with raising our taxes because of that?
I'd rather pay more taxes to protect my fire than some goddamn water that got stuck in my face. I'll pay a thousand dollars more a year for my fire tax than the goddamn faucet that's stuck in my yard.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay?
Yeah.
Fire is more important than a goddamn well.
Well, it is. But, on the other hand, Steve, if it's a, if it's a catch-22, that firefighter that's in front of your house is gonna save, it might save my grandchildren's life that live right up the street from you because it's out there. So, you can look at it.
That's if the engineer did it right. And you got a plumber, I guess.
Yeah, but that's a, again, that's a whole different discussion.
Well, that's the part, the fire department, we know that you don't.
Okay. Let me say something. You're asking what the town board wants. Now, I wear two hats, but that's irrelevant.
Which technically you shouldn't be involved in.
Let me finish, okay? What I would expect to do as a town board member is rely on the fire departments to tell me what they need.
And we have that for years.
I hear you, Steve, I hear you. You're asking town board members what they want. I'm telling you, I'm depending on the experts, the guys in the fire departments, to tell me what they need to provide further protection. I'm not gonna claim, again, I wear two hats, I know a little bit more than the average guy. But, I'm not gonna sit up here as a town board member and say, you're only gonna get X. I'm gonna depend on you guys to say what you need. And I'm gonna believe you because you're the experts. It's you guys and those guys, and I know you work together. So, Martin gave his opinion. He, I'm basically saying what Martin's saying, we're depending on you guys. I think, Bob, you asked the question, are we answering it?
Yeah. My, one other thing, Martin, because you made a couple of good points. How do you feel about the fire tax being raised?
Again, I'm all for it. I just, it's, it's, for me, it's the, and I take this, and I've always said it, and I'm gonna say it again, and I'm gonna say it till right to my grave, the most important volunteer organization we have out there is the, is the fire department. Again, I wanna have the best piece of equipment we have out there, the best personnel we have out there, and I hope we never need them, just so you know. I don't, I don't want you coming to my house.
Yeah, I totally agree with it. And on the other stakes too, everybody has to understand, just like with the town board budget, everything's gone up. Prices and insurance, everything has gone skyrocketed price-wise. So, how are we supposed to maintain if we can't get our increase to cover our increases?
And some of the stuff we have actually is worse than what the town has to deal with as far as keeping their equipment up to date and stuff like that.
Your requirements are strict, much more stringent than.
And we could go do a little bit of, and I, just share, share some thoughts with us. Since 2013 to today, I think our budget's only gone up thirty thousand. We are so.
Who's?
Huh?
Who's budget, I'm sorry?
The town of Byron. What was our budget in 2013 and what is our budget in 2014?
I don't have that right in front of me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, I just, I just going off, I did a little bit of research or heard, you know, the gossip thing, but I think our budget, and how crazy is that? Think of where our, you know, what our economy, where it's gone. What did you get paid in 2013 or what was your cost of your house in 2013? What's your cost in 2024, 2025? It was thirty thousand dollars difference. That's, I think we're doing good. So, if we have to ask for a little bit more to go what's going on to protect ourselves, I have to rush my case on that. Uh, go ahead.
You asked what the town, not the town, the town people, you know, think of the fire department. I guess the fire department is basically ghost clusters. If you don't know who to call, you call the fire department. It doesn't matter if you've done something stupid, we'll come and try to help you out. You know, sometimes we can, but sometimes we can get you in the right way. But, usually the first call is 911, I need a partner. And that, and that. So, and as far as the cost, we have to follow state law. The state law mandates that we, certain gear, if Brian buys me a full set of turnout gear, which is, what, four thousand dollars?
Five.
Five, ten, ten thousand dollars. It sits on the rack, and I don't go to a call for five years.
Yeah, five years.
It's junk.
Junk.
I can't give it to somebody else. It's junk.
Just because of their ratings.
And even if I use it, five years, it's junk, you know? So, the state has just come out with a whole bunch of new laws and that. They just, they don't care. They don't like volunteer fire departments, I'm pretty sure of that. They want us to all have paid fire departments. And, we wouldn't be talking several hundred thousand dollars, we'd be talking millions of dollars.
And Bob, you're, that's, thank you for saying that. Because you're exactly right. It's a volunteer organization, working within our town, taking your time and your effort, your dollars to go sit in a truck, to go, take time off of work to go do a fire. And again, I, you're preaching to the choir. I don't, I'm the bad person to ask, you know? Again, I hope we never need them, but that's, you're right. Think of that. Does anybody ask what Bob Merzak or Brian Hickey, what the hours that they spent taken out of their time and their day? What do they get out of that? The gratification, say that I'm in the fire department, where then, then we have people arguing and asking you about money for them guys to go do what they have to do? We should be ashamed of us to be sitting here and having the situation right now. And again, so for us to ask for, so answer this question, Candy, if we're here, if with our budget, if we're asking for, and Fred, you're the money guy, what are we asking for? Two hundred and?
Two fifty.
Two?
No. Well, okay.
Without the N.
Okay, so, the way it's budgeted out, here's, this is a copy for each of you for what was requested, so you can compare it to what was just.
You know, so then, to answer my question, are we going over our budget? Do we have to do, ask for more money for taxes? Or does this fit within our tax limit that we have right now?
We, from, from the tentative budget that we discussed first time.
Yeah.
Till now. We're over what the state allows for increases. It's, it's, it's just the law, the tax gap override, because we're gonna exceed the 2% difference from last year. We're allowed 2% increase over last year's budget. We're gonna exceed the 2% based on the budget that we're working on right now. Okay?
Yeah, we're seventeen thousand over right now.
I'm sorry, what's that?
We're seventeen thousand dollars over.
On which, which one are you looking at?
For the tax cap.
Um, hang on.
Without including fire service?
With the fire.
That's with fire, yeah.
Which, I think five thousand of that.
Seventeen, where, can you?
So, if we're, if they're, so.
So, that's what we're going, so it's like 4% or something like that. Anyway, they're two different things. Because we're gonna exceed the 2%, we have to do the tax gap override. That's just the law. Okay? I'm not squabbling about that, it's just a process, because we exceeded it, we have to do it, okay? So, what, on the last pages of the draft preliminary budget that you guys have, the one that was in the big packet that Christie left in her boxes, okay? What we're looking at is the back page, and I'm sorry that we don't have that.
The one, the one that's attached to the big packet, yeah. The last, the very last page. The draft preliminary budget, right on the right-hand side, those are the totals and how they break down. I can't read any of anything, I'm a class.
Sorry. Okay? So, that was based on, after we discussed and we had a figure to plug in, from what I plugged in was last year's from the tentative, so I needed a figure for that. All the changes are on here right now, from our tentative budget that I presented, okay? Now, that other sheet that I just handed you has a different last page. Is that something that's really changing? Gives it, I'm sorry.
I got you.
That's what my desk looks like at this.
What's this, my, my clarify what's going on?
It's okay. So, this is, on that page, that has plugged in the, hang on one second. If you go down to the second group of, or the second chart, okay? The top one is the assessments, the bottom one is the budgeted amounts. It goes general highway fire. I originally plugged, the 261 was the original budget for this past year. 285 was what I plugged in for the tentative preliminary budget. And then the sheet that you just got gives the amount for the 310, which, the 310 comes from the $300,000 that you quoted, or that was suggested at the last meeting, okay? Plus a $10,000 more for ambulance. On top of what was.
There was, yes.
Okay, so that, that's the black and white for the board, okay?
It was 150, 150, and we asked for it to show 10,000 from Byron to go towards the ambulance service.
So, if you add up all those, it's 310, correct? Is that, I just wanna make sure. So, that's the figure that you have in front of you, okay? So.
So, just to leave this, oh.
Yeah.
Like 310, and it's going, just working with the fire department. Ryan, if we were to take off that seventeen thousand dollars to make it equal with the town, Candy, then.
Okay, I know, it's enough, seventeen thousand. We can make the budget whatever we need to make, okay? It's just the rules that we have to.
You have to have three votes to override it, you have to have three votes to pass it.
And that's just, that's the tax cap override part, which we're not to that part yet. We're talking dollars. So, what this.
At, at that, the tax rate is still going down. So, we're not paying more in taxes because we're raising the tax gap.
So, to me, that should be, that shouldn't be unprecedented.
Okay. What you need to look at is the dollar amounts and how it impacts the resident, is all. So, on those two little charts on the far right of those, it gives you what the increases are. So, on those two little charts on the far right of those, it gives you what the increases are dollar-wise and percentage-wise, okay? On the, the-
Yeah, I got you.
Okay, so that, that's just the black and white of the, of what we've been discussing for your information, I wanted to make sure you had that. I'm sorry, you, the only thing you guys don't have is the, the three hundred and ten estimate, which will just, it, it increases, um, the two, um, charts on the right of the last page.
Then three ten does not include the thirty for the ambulance?
It does.
Well, it shouldn't, it shouldn't have included the thirty thousand for the ambulance, no.
Hundred and fifty, hundred and fifty, three hundred plus ten is three ten, so I think it's three forty.
So then, it's gonna go up more, because I explained it to our bookkeeper incorrectly, and I thought it was ten percent more, and it was three hundred thousand dollars included with ten percent, so it's more.
It's different, you, where I do math, it's come out three quarters.
And I don't, I can't do the math here, so.
Jeff, can you, Jeff, can you say that, what you said earlier just recently, you were talking about the tax?
Yeah, Jeff, I'd like to hear.
The tax rate went down.
Because our assessments went up, so there's, that goes, that, you know?
Okay, so then there's not technically a big increase?
At, at what was in last week, two weeks ago, the two fifty, that there was not a increase in taxes. So what another ninety thousand dollars would do to that, I would guess that would raise the taxes.
Tax rate.
The, your job, fire tax, you know?
Well, the fire tax does go up.
But, but it's not a lot, right? I mean, it's been so low, um, for so long.
I wanna jump in here and maybe change the subject a little bit, I'm looking at the original package we got this morning.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm looking at the appropriations and the fire issue. First of all, there's an error, because we're spending two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four.
Can you hold on a second? Keep your page here, hold on a second, Fred.
I don't know.
Uh- Do you think seven or eighteen?
Seven, seventeen or eighteen.
Okay. Okay, let's look at this. So where is the error? It says appropriation is under the twenty twenty-four estimate column, two sixty-six, it should say two seventy-one. Now, if you take the two seventy-one, that includes the thirty thousand for the ambulance.
Correct.
The fire department's got to take two forty-one. The twenty twenty-five preliminary says two fifty, that's a three point seven percent increase. My point is, is the three point seven percent increase reasonable when you look at what our inflation was over the last year? And you look at the additional OSHA requirements that are coming down the line? To me, it doesn't make sense.
I agree with that, of course. What's it?
Two fifty, either cut.
That's on this one, two eighty-five. So here, help, will you please help me with the error on the second worksheet then? Because I, I told our bookkeeper incorrectly based on my notes from the last meeting.
I overused you.
I had three ten as a total on my notes, but you're saying that you're asking for three hundred and forty thousand?
No, I'm saying that this is offering two fifty.
Okay, you look, why? That was the, that was because that was what I had to plug in after we were here the last time, and since then, the only thing that changed was this.
Well, why wasn't it changed on what I got this morning? Why are we changing over and over again?
I have two hundred and eight, two hundred and eighty-five.
We discussed that the last meeting.
No, wait a minute.
Before we had another-
I'm just talking about the fire departments, not the ambulance, you're talking two eighty-five. I'm talking two eighty-five. And I'm talking about the first line under appropriations. And I didn't pay any attention to appropriations for this year. Because that's this year, I'm done, so. This year it was two forty-one, so it's two thirty-six, it should say two forty-one.
That was-
We're at five thousand, you know, so that's-
That was the last five thou-
We're around the five thousand that we talked about at the last meeting.
Yes, 'cause-
So what I'm saying, look, is we got two forty-one in twenty twenty-four, this is offering two fifty in twenty twenty-five, which is where we're getting the three point seven percent increase. And I'm offering that, that's not reasonable.
Unreasonable.
I'm saying that it's unreasonable.
Three point seven percent?
Yes.
It's unreasonable, okay?
I find it hard to believe that we're sitting here talking about-
It's nothing different than any other year, it's just we're going at the beginning.
I got you, but it's just, uh, for us, it's, to me, it's, uh, panties that we're squatting over something that's the most important thing we have, and we have to sit here and go through this, I think it's completely ridiculous, myself.
I, I'm not attacking you, would you said that the, uh, the state says that the assessment is only three point seven percent, that you're supposed to raise?
I'm so, I'm not sure, sure of following-
What's the two percent? Two percent, it was two percent, the tax cap?
Yeah.
But the cost of living, I'm guaranteeing you is more than two percent.
I'm not saying that it makes sense.
No, I'm not attacking you, I mean-
It's just the process that hasn't been changed yet, okay?
Yeah, and it's both seen through people.
It's just, it must be taken care of, we have to go through the motions.
It's somebody in the office, someplace, so, so.
No, no, they were, they were being the worst of the, I, I-
Dead horse, so Fred, declare fire, I didn't look at this year's estimate budget, I want to know what was budgeted last year. Because it was, I, I believe that was part of it. There were so many issues with it in, in the math, so, from the budgeted apartment point last year to this year, there was a jump. It's an extra ten thousand dollars that we added this year that wasn't added, okay? So, that last year was last year, this is this year. I don't disagree with Martin and what he said about service, and I've sat in the audience through all of these, the last ten years, right with Jeff, always sitting up here, and it's very frustrating. Um, for you as a board number, for you out there, what I wanna know is what happened with the thought that I thought we're moving forward as a town to make sure that when the state does something, the town, our fire department is prepared in the best way possible for whatever's gonna come down the line in the future.
Candy, gosh, I, I, they just go talk to all these guys, and look what they do, and their, the time that they spend, and you know, it's, that was the most ridiculous question I've heard. These guys bust their ass to do what they gotta do, and you have to ask that question, I, it's unreasonable, it's totally horrible for these guys to go through what they're doing, I had-
I think I can answer it, what the state does, we have no idea, there is no, hey, five years from now, we're gonna do this. It's all of a sudden, next year or right now, you have to do this, right?
Okay.
And, and, so, it's like, all of a sudden, somebody comes up and throws a bill at you, which you didn't know about, you know, with your budget, it's basically with us, you know? You gotta do this next year, you know?
And that's the tough part, you, you gotta marry to this budget that you have, and it's just so minimal amount that you guys are trying to deal with. A- a- again, I cannot believe that we're sitting here discussing this in, in the grand scheme of things, if we could fit it within our budget, I have to, tattoo, tattoo for the most important volunteer, or, most important volunteer organizational, why are we even standing there wasting our time? To me, this is the biggest joke that we're wasting time to, to go through for the people that support our community. I, I can't even believe that we're even having this, it's, it's disgusting to me, the thing that we're sitting here having this discussion, it's sickening, just so you know.
No, it's-
Okay, under OSHA, OSHA does not have any authority over volunteer fire departments in the state of New York. They turn that over to PESH, which follows the exact same rules that OSHA is putting out. Uh, so, we have no clue, but what I think is going to happen is that it's gonna go toward a more county-wide based system.
And, and you're, you're right, and that's the tough part, it's gonna get harder and harder as time goes on, which is the lack of enthusiasm that we had, and that when the winter gets, my dad lives in the fire, everybody's involved with fire, you guys can't be, it's thankful that you guys have what you have today. And, and again, I can still go back to, these guys are guys and girls and, you know, men and women out there doing it, and we're, we're fighting them, that they wanna take care of us. But I, I feel it's, um, it's, we're not giving them the gratitude that we should be giving them, and, and I'm gonna hold it at that.
Maybe there's one thing that I can point out, that, uh, just, uh, one of the biggest costs of the fire department is to provide the equipment, the engines, okay? Uh, I'm sure the town has the same problem with their highway department and buying trucks and buildings and stuff, okay? We just got done paying four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think, for our truck that we made, main bumper, that we bought in twenty fif- twenty fifteen, okay? We're gonna have to buy another one in, what, twenty thirty, I think it is, right? We just got done paying for the one that we borrowed money against, because we didn't have the increased funds to put them in the bank to save ahead.
And, you know, and to go on to that, you know, talk about the highway department, what they do, and, you know, what you guys do, just to, not to change the subject, but this week when I drove up through to see what the town was going on, not that everybody noticed it, but this week, you go out and you see every one of our town trucks sitting out there, they have their hoods up. David had all of his crew out there changing the oils in the truck, doing whatever they have to do. How many other towns in our community goes and does what that man does right there?
Sure.
You know, so the things that go inside, just, you know what, drive around our town and see what goes on, because I see it, I personally, I run a business, I see what they do, change the oil, we don't send it out, notice heat, he does it himself. And again, you look at the fire department, what you guys do over there, it goes unnoticed, you know, and it just, but that's the best part, what we have in our, look, we're found, how many times Steve crawls underneath the truck to take care of what he has, and he doesn't even think nothing about charging anybody about, about it, you know, just, think of it that, you know, if you just put, you know, if you wanna put apples in, or if you gotta put, put apples in that pattern, and look at our, our community, what we have, we have something really going for ourselves, and we don't know it, just so you know.
And let me, let me just, just finish though, my last thought, um, so anyway, in the next five years, we have to get, be prepared to pay for a million dollar truck, okay? Uh, and it's probably gonna be a hell of a lot more than that, so we've got five years to either save a million dollars, which ain't gonna happen, or we're gonna have to borrow money, okay?
Yeah.
So, we're now in the borrowing mood, just like the ambulance squad, uh, squad was in the borrowing mood for their ambulance that they just bought. We don't know what's gonna happen in the next few years, but the problem that I wanna point out to you is, since we can't, uh, predict for the next five years exactly how much it's going to cost, what we do is we ask you guys for what we think is our estimated cost, so that we can get ahead reasonably in the next five years. If we're wrong, what happens is, is we don't get the money, extra money from you, we get the extra money by putting on, spending time putting on things like our gun raffle and this and that. One of the hardest things to do-
Put, put your kid off of the move raffle, Steve.
You bet you. Well, the hardest things for, for me, when I was fire chief, was to ask the guys to come in every Saturday, plus run bingo on Sundays, plus have this, plus that. That was thirty, forty years ago, maybe more, and I, I don't know what it was, but the, but, the point I'm making is, is we're gonna still provide you with the service you need, and what the, the state says we've gotta provide. But if we don't have the money to do what we have to do, then we've gotta spend our time not training, or arguing, uh, you know, arguing with our better halves about more time spent at the fire department. So, that, that's why, our best guess is, sure, it's a hell of a big increase, but everything else has gone just topsy-durby in the last two, three years, so-
And we all know that.
So, we gotta have that three hundred and forty thousand dollars for next year.
No, I know so far, I don't love our numbers, but we get twenty years out of the truck, and you guys are contractors, I know you guys don't get twenty years of truck. And that, we take a truck that's cold and hasn't been riding a while, and we run, run it hard, I mean, it's like a race car, you know, we run it hard to get there, we run it hard to what's there, and we come back and we put it away. And that, and that's not the greatest thing for them, as, as you both guys know.
Oh, you're, you're exaggerating, I'm worried about someone sitting there doing nothing, but yeah.
We get, we, we nurse them long for twenty years, and every ten years, we buy a new piece of equipment, since we have two, and that, we don't include the, the other one. But I'm sure the buyer is pretty annoyed, I don't know how many years they try to get out of theirs, I know that we tried for twenty, you know? Sometimes we get a little bit more, because we don't have the money, but I mean, the last one we paid for was seven hundred fifty thousand? What's that, the bumper?
Four hundred and forty.
Four hundred and forty?
Yeah, that's right.
We paid very bad-
That's not offsetted with all of them.
Yeah, it's gonna be probably at least half again that in ten, in twenty years, at least, if not double.
Seven years.
Yeah, seven years.
Don't forget, you got the tofu eaters pushing lacquer, pretty sure we won't be able to buy a diesel.
Oh, well, I feel about it.
Mad supervisor, to answer your question directly, you asked earlier, we are attempting to merge the two fire departments, we are however receiving a lot of resistance, though.
Okay.
We are moving forward, we would like to see that happen, I was doubtful, don't we, I was hopeful to you they would get it done this year, but unfortunately, we're not approaching you as one entity today. I will tell you this, I worked, we've worked several engines at one point two million dollars, and we're not getting them for another five years, and when we pick them up, they're gonna tell us how much more we owe. So you're looking at a million and a half dollar piece of apparatus, to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do what we do is liable. I'm not, I don't now wanna insult anybody, I'm not trying to pick a fight, but I'm telling you it's liable, we should be asking for half a million dollars, five hundred thousand dollars is what we should be asking for. The fact that we don't merge makes it harder for us to come to you as a unified front and ask for that money, right? The services you want us to provide, we cannot provide for the amount of money you want us, you want us to provide. I understand that you can wave a magic wand and give us all the money we want, we have to take steps to get there, but we need to start seriously considering the future of fire protection in this town.
Which you and I have had a conversation, and that's-
The reality of the matter is, they may decide that we need to staff one of these firehouses, all right? You're looking at a minimum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for salary, and that's Monday through Friday, eight hours a day.
And I-
And that'll go by one of twenty-four hours.
And going to the, the, the county meetings, I wanna make sure I was understanding what fire issues they were talking about at the county, I wanna make sure that this town is on board with, I'd like to see something housed here if it goes county-wide. That ultimately that, that means it serves our residents, 'cause we don't know what's going on, right? We don't, but we have to be prepared.
We should take a step, we should put our best foot forward to make sure that we're on the lead.
And that's, that's what I wanted to hear from you, from the fire departments, that's what I thought we heard back in the summer?
The door's still open and we're more than welcome.
Okay, that's, that's the important thing, and I think that's what the tax rate was.
No, Candy, I gotta, to answer my question, I think the best step forward, just from a little bit, and, and into where they're at now, I can't explain or express the camaraderie, the people that-
But I wanna make sure that that is expressed to the taxpayer when they're, they're getting their tax bill, okay? But the open, open communications with the town, because if there's something that we can do as a town to expedite or facilitate that, is it the Department of State, what do we have to, you know?
There is lots of money out there for organizing, like the combined-
Correct, and that's what I'd like.
Unfortunately, we have to both come to the table willing to combine before we can even try to get that money.
So, with that, um, whatever's decided by the board this evening, um, I think that when the contracts are written, to move forward in that direction- contracts are written, to move forward in that direction is more positive, in a positive direction than asking for monthly reports of what you're doing, okay? Just throwing that out there, okay? I appreciate the monthly reports, but that's, nobody needs to be penalized for the work that's already been done, as long as, you know, are you compliant? That's what I care about, that's what people care about.
We're compliant, we do what we have to do, and it's just another step where we're pulled away from our families, our jobs, to continuously, you know, through these meetings, 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 when we, we turn everything in at the end of the year, everything that's requested, we're, you know, we're not only answering to the state, we have to reiterate to the town board on our decisions. That's what it felt like, because we, we do NFIR state reports on a regular basis.
And we get ours, we got ours up until last year of annually, the county event or whatever, I'm not sure.
You are already received, though. I have two perspectives that I like to throw out there, just to add a thought off the top of my head. I'm just thinking back to negotiating contract oh-three, oh-four. We're at about sixty-five thousand for each, sixty-five to seventy thousand for each fire company. But I know what was happening in my fire company is where we're working bingo every Friday night, we're bringing another grant for that, it was adding up, we would come up to about one-ten, one-twenty, hundred and twenty thousand back in two thousand and four, is what we were coming up with, our operating cost. We would use that money in, in, in just generally operating, so we were making up all the difference. All those fundraising and the amount of workforce that we have is, is diminishing, and it's not there anymore. The bingos, both halls do not conduct a bingo anymore. We do offer events and stuff like that to the community, but it's just, that income is not there for us anymore. We've been doing to get, to keep the price down, we're doing the best we can, we couldn't ask for a lot more. My number was higher, I was thinking one-sixty-seven for each company, I came in at one-fifty, and I says, this is just to maintain what we got from physicals. Right now, our town rating is four for life for the taxpayers, that's a very, for ISO rating, that is a very good rating for our taxpayers and it's keeping our tax rate really low, and we're maintaining that. And how we got to that is the quality of the fire department, the water supply and hydrant location, the city communications and the communication systems, and that's your local nine-one-one center and the communications and that, and also the radio systems that we have in our facilities. Several years ago, we got a, a grant for radios in Johnson County, they were giving to us. Today's cost of that radio is four thousand four hundred dollars for an individual, one single radio. And they just asked us to, how much do we need to replace? I trimmed down the budget, and I said, just ten radios for us to replace, it's becoming to the end of its lifespan, those radios themselves. So I'm looking at, if I have to replace, you can't, they cannot replace the parts and the pieces, they could fix what, what's available to a certain point.
Like the phone system here.
It is, yeah. We've had them so long, they've become, if they break, they become a boat anchor, it's that, it's that simple. So we have to keep in mind that if I have to replace two radios, right there, and then...
Do you have a contingency in your budget? I guess I didn't...
This is what we're trying to build into the budget.
A little bit, okay, for sure.
Yes, that's, that's all the things. Perspective, we have physicals that we have to do, there's things that we have to offer our people now, we have to cancer benefits, not only cancer benefits, we have to, like, give the individuals the option to get scanning, test cancer, and any of the standard, we have to offer that to our people. And so those costs have become, because they're mandated on what the owner, so we're just trying to get ahead and stay ahead of what is going on to keep us afloat. I, I think over the years, we've kept the, the number restrained, and it's just, everything's coming to a hat where it's the money and the everything. Decision moving forward, we can combine the two fire companies, build a new facility, put us under one roof, we can take a loan on an agreement and stuff like that, we can do all that. Those are all prospective ideas in the future.
Only a little money, too.
And it costs money, we'll have to take loans at that point, too.
And that's exactly, you know what, and that's something we did have that discussion, right, I think, for bringing that up. Because if you do that, just knowing that a cost for a building, you do it.
Yes.
Now, just say a ten thousand square foot building, you know, it costs ten million to go do that, you know, are we ready for that? So again, you know, are we happy with what we got? Fire and South Fire, no, we don't have to go through and spend, and I'm just using that ten million, are we ready for that? No, we're not. So if we can, again, if we can just figure out what we have, but to me, it's pennies on a dollar, just to make sure that our community is, oh, gosh, I think we're...
Doing the right thing.
Doing, doing the right thing, that's exactly it.
On the top of it, the numbers are the win line for people who come out and want to free.
You look at, in two thousand and three, when you were having people in bingo, you were having volunteers that were out there, you don't, one reason why a lot of that stopped because you don't have the volunteers to come do that.
That and the smoking law.
Just wanted to go, yeah.
Thank you, Coach.
Steve, you stop smoking, I hope, right?
There's a lot of other little items that, that can come up and be discussed about, but I, I believe we've been maintaining right along and keeping it a good hold on the money amount. And I, and somebody goes, well, give me a crazy number, and I go, I tone back from the crazy number, I brought it back to, oh, the one-fifty, and I says, just to move forward, just to keep moving forward and, and keep what we got going.
I don't want to put Jeff on the spot, you've been pretty quiet over there tonight. Jeff, what's, just, probably your year, do you have tenure on this thing over here?
They, tough conversation every year, um, we want to give you guys everything you need to protect the community, but how, how are we qualified to tell you what you need, right? But we're the ones that got a vote on it, so, coming up with that happy medium and trying to protect the taxpayers' interests, it's tough.
Well, taxpayer has two interests.
Yeah.
One's financial and two is...
The money and the protection.
Right.
So, are, by having less of a budget, are you protecting them, but hurting them because the protection might not be there? You know, so it's, it's not a fun conversation.
I, I got a couple things in. You were talking about countywide fire department. I, that's something that should terrify you. You realize there may not even be...
There's a lot of things that are terrifying.
Out west, they have countywide fire departments, they have one firehouse, which would be in Otavia, and that, that means that if any call come out here, we have to wait for somebody to come out from Otavia. Now, we have snowstorms, they're just not coming, you realize?
You're, you're right.
And whatever that, their budget is, you have no control over, they would tell you.
Much like if, if we changed this into a fire district, there would no longer be any budget discussion here, it would be a...
It'd be a separate organization.
It's a sep, yeah, I mean, there's, there's all kinds of other, you know...
Another thing is, we have an advantage with two firehouses. You have a ticking time bomb that runs right down through underneath those power lines, it's called a high-pressure gas line. Because that thing would let loose, it would be like a bomb going off.
Luckily for us, we're protected in this town by that high-pressure gas line by two separate pop-off valves that are in this town, so the probability of that rupturing under our town is very low.
But there is a possibility.
And it's possible, the possibility of being a foot bomb that lands before this conversation ends.
One or the other, and they have to, and they have, or even the power lines come down, they could block the road. So you're better off that, with two, and you're better off for insurance, you know? The, the closer you are to a firehouse, the less your insurance rating is.
That is true, the ISO rating is based off the fire protection in this town, and it's based off the fire department that's central located in the town.
There's also another thing that goes down, two-thirty-seven, it's called Clarendon Fault.
I'm sorry, what's that town?
The Clarendon Fault.
Oh, yeah.
It's an earthquake.
As long as you guys all know about it, we're all set.
All right, so I guess, where do we go?
So, we have a tougher... I'm not sure, because we're at the same point, a little higher than, than the year past. My concern is the, the conversation for the future, I'll be honest, you know? There's a lot of activity and discussion at the county level, based on what's going at the state, so I know that, speaking with all the leaders in both departments, that you're all aware of everything, and you bring that information back to your own fire departments.
So I guess the other thing, too, of the budget we have tonight, and we agree on that, that's what we have, and it stays, and we get a two-year contract out of it, is that out of the question, knowing that this is what you're going to get?
Um...
You know, just, and Fred, you're, you're the money guy.
They've had longer contracts in the past, right?
Yeah.
Is the, I...
Two years, right, Brian?
I think they've had a lot of...
So Brian, if you were, if I asked, Brian, Bob, so let's, let's, hey, we can agree on this for the next two years.
Yeah.
We look at both you guys and look at me, are you happy with it?
At what contract, please?
Brad, what's that number right there? Are you with your...
We've got two-fifty in it right now.
On the, on the big, the big packet, correct?
Right, the twenty-twenty-five full amount.
What kind of an increase are you talking for twenty-twenty? You want two years?
Are we, are we looking at the three-hundred-and-ten for two years?
I think so, right, right, the two-fifty plus the thirty for the fire department?
That would be two-eight, we're looking at three-ten.
We're looking at three...
One-fifty, one-sixty, plus the thirty.
Plus the thirty for the ambulance.
And that's still above within our tax bracket, right, or...
No, we're, we're over the tax cap, no matter what we do at this point. So that, that's going, that's happening no matter what. It doesn't, that's just, that's just sending something to the state, that's had nothing to do with what we do in here.
Right, it's a...
It's a moot point. It's, it's what, it's those dollar amounts that are in the right-hand side...
Three-ten.
That fall...
Right, right, right.
That get lucky to...
Three-ten plus the thirty.
So the figure that you gave me that I plugged in at the three-ten is not...
Because you got to weigh whether I would...
One-sixty because the fire department virus funding the ambulance is high, is that what, is more...
So I guess, Brad, it's, Brad, it's...
I don't like...
Can you explain that? Because, well, I was thinking of getting to...
Okay. It's going to be more than what's on that right sheet.
But, but, but...
Brian, would you listen to me, try to get them wrong?
Correct.
What the firehouse requested is one-fifty for South Fire, one-sixty for Bayern, which is explained as the one-fifty that South Fire is getting plus ten thousand to support the ambulance service. So we're talking one-fifty and one-sixty, that's three-ten, plus the thirty thousand dollar debt service on the ambulance.
Correct.
So we're talking three-forty in total, okay?
Okay, that's for next year.
But so if we, so that, so I'm just asking, so if we were, and I'm just thinking out loud here, you know, if we were able to agree on this, can we agree on a, a two-year contract on this number?
Mike? No, I think we should have an increase.
I think it should be one year, Martin, only because we're trying to move forward to go as one department, so we want to be careful how we, how we proceed with that. That could, that could, that could jeopardize us trying to, put us together.
We don't want to close the doors, no.
We don't want to close the doors, we want to keep...
If you guys, if you had any kind of agreement where you were going to join, that contract could be amended.
At any point.
We would fall over to amend that contract.
To make it happen.
To join, yes.
So even if we went a two-year contract, it would still, that'd be something you could do, okay?
So what was the mark, well, pardon?
One-fifty, one-fifty, one-sixty, thirty thousand, right, so we better...
I wrote it down, but it was, and my apologies for misunderstanding that the way you jotted in mine. I would have gotten a different figure for it.
You just want a one year where you haven't got to hear us, that's all. No, Steve, if I want to hear, I have to stop, I don't want to get caught. But, yeah, I'd like to, 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 but, yeah, highs up.
Reggie, you're shaking your head, what is it now?
My taxes this year went up a thousand dollars in Stafford. Stafford gets four-twenty-five a year for one department. And they have, we have more trucks here in the two towns than Stafford does, and they're looking to buy a million and a half dollar truck again, too.
You know, I'm just, just, don't compare, let's figure out what we need here and, and take care, I'm just saying, we're going in the right direction with...
I just tried to say, you guys don't realize what you're getting for money right now.
I think, I think that the board here does, but there's, there's two sides, and we're really overall working to, to get there. I, I would recommend just a one-year contract, I'm just saying, not commit to anything and look at it again.
So, Dan, are you, so let me ask you, are you good with what they're asking on the one-fifty to one-sixty and the thirty thousand, are you good with that?
Who are you asking?
He's asking me, and I'm thinking, I'll, slowly.
Oh, I got you.
And I'm a contract person, so the ambulance is really, it's part of the budget, but it's off the table because it was a contract that we negotiated before. You know, so, I mean, it's probably looking to have been that way.
So you would, so you would be more of a, so one-fifty, one-fifty, thirty thousand at the three-thirty, is that, I'm just...
No, I'm, I'm trying to think.
Yeah, yeah, think out loud, can you?
I'm trying, I'm thinking. That's okay.
Too late now, you're already on the spot.
I'm on the spot. I'm thinking about this, okay.
I offer the following proposal and move for its adoption.
Thank you, Fred.
I would go forward with the one-fifty, one-sixty, and thirty thousand, and with budget for twenty-twenty-five.
A second.
With a, okay...
One-year contract.
Can I stop the motion for a second, to just clarify some points, because there's been some things that have happened in the past? At this point, this isn't the contract, this is the budget, and this is where things fell apart last year, I think, with some of the things that transpired afterwards.
Yep.
So we're going to ask for the contract at that point when we talk to the attorney to be written that way, if, if this is what's chosen at this point, or decided at this point, right? Okay. And then they can argue that at the contract point if they don't like what we say here.
Correct.
Right? Okay.
This isn't the contract, this is...
What's that?
This is the, this is the budget that we have to do at this point.
So I, if you want to...
So, stack the motion, second.
But I mean, it'd be real hard not to go with that, with the input we got and the conversation we've had, right, that, that would change. With the input we got and the conversation we've had, right, that, that would change.
Unless something tragic happened, you know. Cause it's tough, I know I'm on the spot.
Any other discussion?
From anybody, public members?
Yeah, I got, I got, just to throw a little clarity in it. Cause I know a lot of people don't understand where the fire chiefs come in. We hold a big responsibility. We're liable for everything that happens out there. It comes down on us, the chief of the fire departments, for actions, lawsuits, you name it. We're on the spot. I wanna know that our funding is there to protect not only our firefighters, our EMS, our residents. I don't wanna have to be standing in front of somebody's house saying, I don't have the proper equipment. We can't go in and save somebody. I'm just putting that out there. That's a sense of feeling, people don't understand our responsibility, what lies on us. The responsibility, we could go, the fire chief is the one that's gonna go to jail. He's the one that's gonna be put down. So I want, I just wanna put that out there. It's a big responsibility we hold on our shoulders every time we go out there for a call. We're the one that's responsible for what happens out there. And if I don't, if we don't have the proper equipment on that scene, we're no good to anyone. So the funding does help get us where we have to go. Okay?
I was just gonna say, that, that, what, what, wait, we were, you're saying, come on, tell us what your thought, if you're into this thing, you're part of the company, what is your thought?
Absolutely, so I have a very personal connection to the volunteer fire, uh, fire department's family. So I totally agree with what's been said in regards to the service and what is required to make that happen. Hundred percent agree with, you know, what they're asking for in regards to fundage. But I do know that it is the board's job to either decide that they're wanting to raise taxes or not. Accepting this is perfectly fine and dandy, wonderful, great, I definitely support it. But where is the board gonna find the money to cut that back for the town's folks? So their rates don't go up, so they don't have to pay more. So there's gotta be places and discussions within the actual budget to compensate for this increase. So that's how I would look at this from, from a citizen's perspective.
Shannon, what was your, what you got?
Um, no, I just, I had a question on like, for, for your budget, like the 160, 150, do you guys, like how, when we look at this budget, right, you can see everything that's being appropriated and where. Do you guys put together like a budget where it shows like where all the funds go and-
They have multiple copies.
So they have, that's what I'm asking, cause I don't have that. So, so in that, when you guys have like money that's, you're putting money away towards some of the capital purchases in the future. That's what I was kinda asking. So you're kinda putting money away for that, like a-
Approved budget?
Yeah.
If somebody had to take accounting to get out of, taking power from us. So, uh, yes, has everything, both fire and EMS, where it goes, where it comes from?
Right, so you guys are doing the same thing. We just, we just don't have a path, we just don't have a path.
You know, Shannon, that's a great point, so-
Cause like I think that kinda helps lead everybody to like, hey, there's legit head stuff that has to, you know-
So I just, to answer Shannon's question, so if you, and then just asking Bob and Brian, if Shannon said, hey, I'm gonna come down here and see your books tomorrow. You know, hug the books and say, here it is, there's no secret, right? It's, it's our, it's our money.
Actually, the board's got, the board's got a copy of all our-
I wanna answer your question, if she, if she comes down there and wants to, right, I wanna see your books. Bob, I wanna see your books, you can say, here it is Shannon, I'm gonna show you exactly what it is.
It's public information.
I think it's, yeah, and I'm not asking, and I'm not asking to say that it's not needed or anything. I really think that like, you know, I mean, I just did some quick math here. I mean, I think it comes out to like maybe 37 bucks more for a hundred thousand, something or something like that, to do this budget. So I, you know, I, I mean, for me personally, as a town resident, that's worth it for me and I don't really care if it goes up that much. But everybody's got different, right, I mean, everybody has different, you know, views, but that's how I, I feel about it. But I was just asking, like, so you guys are, you know, building like a fund for these large purchases coming up?
The idea that they're perfect, well, they don't have to spend it.
You actually have to have-
The problem is those funds that we've been building for years and years and years, unfortunately are not gonna be enough.
No, and that's what I'm asking with this increase, that's part of it being appropriated, appropriated there.
We have to, we have to have the funds anyway. I mean, you never know if something catastrophic would happen to a large piece of equipment. Like the border breaks or something like that, then you've got thousands of dollars you've gotta pay, you know. So we've gotta have a little bit of a, of a fund. But we do, we do have, we set money aside every year from the town budget for future purchases, cause we have to, you know, we couldn't.
You have to show up for an audit, if you ever been audited, they wanna know what, what, what everything is set out for. What's, what's this amount of money for, what account, what's it for? This is for your truck reserve, this is for your equipment, this, everything is all listed appropriately. So if you're asked, this is what everything is for and why it's there.
Yeah, and I think that it just seems like, you know, the town should be supportive of the fire departments.
I want the gentleman back here, I don't know if he confused me when he said it, but what we're discussing now is a line item specifically. You get taxed for fire protection and it's a separate tax, you know, even though we're talking about the whole budget because we're doing, you're doing the whole budget at once. But it is a separate item and that, and that money that the town collects for fire has to go to the fire departments. They can't say, well, there's a little extra, we're gonna, we're following out to David for snow.
Right, and I think Ben's just saying, what other alternative is out to help fund?
Well, I mean, it's ours.
There's gotta be power balance to that, uh, that charge. Again, from, from, saying from a board's perspective, their job is hopefully to keep that dollar amount regardless of where it comes from, uh, for the individual to pay, to not increase as much as possible. So the fact that we're increasing the fire again, can we counter that with lowering or moving something from the-
In the individual tax levy, as Jeff pointed out, the tax rate went, went down. It's a whole formula, I, I'll be honest, I don't have that right in front of me, I don't, I have the bookkeeper plugging the play, all that stuff in. So it could be, it may be not as painful as it sounds.
As long as percentage is within a reasonable-
And I'm talking, I'm talking visibly, okay? Ultimately, we just wanna say, we have the protection you told us we were gonna have. That's what it boils down to, a hundred percent.
And then you're comfortable if it goes up a little bit, you're comfortable paying it, right, if it's-
Yeah, for my personal situation, yes, but there are others that you may not have-
Oh no, and I hear right, what, the average guy that worked at, what you're, they'll reach out, my folks, they are working for them. And that's a perfect, that's a great example, you know, for us, we work a little bit harder, we can support it.
It's just a pizza.
Fix income, that, jeez, we got this amount of-
If you can't afford pizza, it's a lot.
That's exactly it.
Yeah, but, yeah, it was part of the water and of course, you know, that's a big hit that a lot of people didn't want or didn't need, but it's now on the wall.
And we know there are some people that didn't want, I don't have to knock and report them out.
Well, I'm with him, but-
Not 1,200 bucks a year. So let's try to get this thing, Fred made the motion, I saw you did.
Uh, on favor of Fred's motion, it's a motion. Isn't it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right, sorry.
I think he said both terms, motion, dismotion.
Oh, it's a motion to accept that, that amount for the, to plug into the-
I saw you did. Candy, what do you think? Rockefeller says you're shit.
I know.
Do you want Jeff to go?
Jeff go.
Yes.
I'm gonna say yes, and we need further, I would want to qualify with further discussions because that's just me, okay?
You also have to ask.
Um, I have high hopes, okay, with, with this, um, with, after talking with you, if we're moving in that direction, it's gonna be a less, a, a less difficult pill for the residents if there's more communication, liaisons about moving forward. If it's the Department of State, um, so it's a yes, we pass the motion to plug those figures in, I will get that. Um, I did pull off a, a report, the Rockefeller Report, are you, anybody? It's a template for consolidation mergers and, and stuff like that. I just pulled it off the internet. It was interesting and they used several local fire departments that have merged or, um, I think Ridge Culver was one of them. They used as an example.
There's one in this county that just did that.
And since then, this, this report by 2022. I will be looking at that a little more closely.
And Candy, and I'm with you, I, okay, when I first came on the board, I, you know, thought, Jesus, could be slim. Don't quite get the two fire departments to merge, but I just, uh, knowing that-
It's up to them and we just have to help them to do it.
But again, you know, and I think Brian brought it up too, you know, if, if we're doing good, we have what we have, we merge these two fire districts, fire companies, it could cost us 10 million for a new one. So we have to, you know, the, the good with the bad, word is that way out, you know, but then great conversation. Um, and again, I, I asked myself, I thought, I'm just gonna pull these fire departments and ask them, why can't you guys combine? It's easier said than done.
And there's lots of stuff that's said to do it, but if you don't-
Brad and all that, but yeah, it's a-
Don't push it.
It can be done, it happens, so.
And I just wanna make this, hopefully we can. I would love to see, I would love to see, I would love to see the fire fire district across the street with a brand-new fire department out there, but better get ready to pay for it, you know, that's a-
We, we've tried this three times and three times it has failed because your predecessors and that two people sitting there had said no to it because of hiring a lawyer and, cause they were supposed to hire the lawyer, but forming a fire district would also take this budget off of your table and it would also not be part of your 2% then.
Right.
And that, and all of a sudden, you've got a lot of play right there, you know, that would be up. And that, and it's, it's just a, a proposition that you would have to propose, I believe, to form a fire district.
We'd have to be voting on it.
There's, there's a whole process.
You would, you would vote on a proposition to form a fire district?
And then the town.
Or the town. Either comes by petition or by board resolution to do so.
And they're also capped at 2%.
Hey, before we have to rescind, let's leave it. Okay, let's just tie it all out to the next.
So I do, I just wanna thank, listen, I wanna thank the board, okay? This is probably one of the better outcomes, seriously, that we've had in a long time. And I thank everyone for listening to us, for, for hearing us, for bringing it out to you. It means a lot, truly. You gotta understand how much this means to the fire departments. This is huge, so thank you all very much.
That's about it.
Well, and from all of us and the residents, thank you for all of your service. But we need to keep the lines of communications open the whole year.
And Candy, I just think, what happens here, this just helps the line of communication instead of the, I mean, I do look, I think it only makes it better.
Thank you for coming in at 6 o'clock for this because they always wait till the, it's always the last thing at the end of the night and it's exhausting at that point.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, sorry. So, um, a motion for recess, for me, I was to leave for a second, just the firemen, before we move on to the rest of the meeting. We're at, um, town business, Jeff's, go ahead.
With the budget, we need to make a resolution to accept the preliminary in schedule.
It's after, oh, I was gonna do these quick things and then go back to that real quick thing. We can do whatever you want.
No.
At this point, um, you, everyone should have received this from Mr. Yaxley from the Historical Society, the DSS, I'm not sure if I'm saying it correctly, of a set of law books, 1806 through early 1900s. There's a resolution in the packet, if someone would read that. Some of the, they're being picked up by, not the Holland Land Office, but the Genesee County-
Department of History.
Yep, that, that one. So they're going somewhere, they're not being destroyed, but they won't take up the space at the museum.
I offer the following resolution and passion to move for its adoption. Whereas the Byron Historical Society has chartered with the duties of overseeing the archived materials of the Byron Museum. And whereas from time to time, articles are found to no longer serve the historical purposes intended or are of size unable to properly house. And whereas New York Board of Regents requires approval for de-accessioning of archived materials by the town board. So therefore, very being resolved, the Byron Town Board approves a de-accessioning of a collection of law books dated 1806 through early 1900s from the Byron Museum Archives. This collection is to be donated to the Genesee County Department of History to be added to their collection. I need a second.
I second that.
Paul Hart?
Yes, aye.
Aye. Aye. So those, we'll let Donald tomorrow. The next thing is, I'll pass these out for you. Yesterday, the RFQs for engineering services, um, was due and we received back two solicitations. I'll pass before, you can have these. That's one of them, oh, can you pick one in mates? And then the other one is from, that's from MRD Group. And then this one is from an engineering firm called Square Engineering out of Buffalo. There's two. Maybe we should have received an email of each of these two. Okay, so those are for you to look at. We have to, I believe, because this is an EFC funded project, we need to interview the candidates. So we'll have to schedule something for them, so take a look at these, I haven't looked at them yet, they just came in. MRDs got dropped off yesterday and the email came in early yesterday morning. I have not looked at them, but I wanted you to have the copies.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And, um, that's all for that. Um, we'll be back in touch of when we're gonna, we'll hold interviews. I was told that, um, they could be by phone or by email. I've gotta research that more, but EFC requires, um, interviewing the contractors as part of the funding process.
Are you set up to do Zoom?
Um, we could, if we need to, we'll figure it out.
I, I have a meeting in Rochester every other month, it's by Zoom.
So, um, we're not, the town no longer is, it hasn't been, I think it expired last year, the-
You could probably do it for us.
I mean, yeah, so we'll figure that out when the time comes. I'll have to get with, um, the attorney on it to figure out where we stand. But that stuff just all came in. We also, the next point of business is the assessor, everyone received a copy of-
Yeah, we did.
The assessor's letter, I spoke with Louise today, Jeff, she said you took, spoke with her also?
Yeah.
Um, she's very happy to continue on here. Um, she said that she would go back to her, her last salary, disregard the salary increase because she won't have office hours by, by appointment only. I just wanted to ensure that she ended up with the proper communication tools between her computer and her cell phone so that people could, could contact her. And she says she can retrieve her voice messages from the town hall. So I'm gonna have her show me how to do that because I don't know how to do that.
And that's pretty hip these days, why don't you get ahold of the phone?
And she's, and she works weekends anyway, so she meets people here, so I don't foresee a problem. I spoke with Barry Flansburg about it earlier also because he was the previous one and she's been in contact with him. And he's completely remote for his two other towns, so it should pose no problem. As long as she has computer access to the county, um, assessment records or whatever, that real property she should be buying. And getting an assessor is not an easy thing to do. There's nothing few and far between. So, um, if everyone's good with that, I will-
I have a question.
Sure.
Is Murray a full-time position or?
Is what?
The town of Murray, is that a full-time?
I don't believe so. I, I, I don't know, I can't answer that, I don't, I'm just speaking off, maybe.
Okay, how many hours does she currently work in there?
It's not about hours, it's about getting the job done, I guess, is what, I, I ask various same questions. And with technology, the job is actually less work because it's, it's online, it's, it's generated, you know, everything is virtual, a lot of the stuff.
Right, it's not like it usually be where you have to-
Correct, so-
If you're out there, you have to get hours from, you know, to-
So I don't know what the hours that are, that entail in the job.
She currently works Tuesday afternoons, one to four are her set hours. I'll be honest, she doesn't get a ton of foot traffic. Um, you know, she's always accessible to me or, you know, to somebody. I always offer email or her voicemail and she always returns- I always offer email or her voicemail and she always retrieves it and like Candy says, she's come in. I've seen her here on Saturdays, Sundays at night. I mean, so I think she's just willing to do, or she does, she does do whatever it takes to get the job done.
So.
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
I agree, but it's interrrectal, Fred. Again, the difference from us, we usually have to meet in person. The page is done, you know, there's emails or calling and leaving messages. And again, as long as they're responsive, who cares what time she works? As long as she's doing her job, it doesn't, you know, and tell you get to somebody who said, you're not getting some, that's what we discuss it about.
She said in her email that she would be posting her office hours when she needed to, when, what are those things called? The exemptions, there's exemptions that she has to file and stuff like that. So she'll be posting those, probably let the town board know the month before what her posted hours were for that month when she has to do that, along with the appointments, so.
I'm gonna do that.
I asked her also if she would negotiate if both jobs became too much and she had to eliminate one, that she would allow us to negotiate to stay here instead of Murray also.
Oh, good, good point, just in case, because she said it was. So.
Good point, Jeff.
So it takes care of the next step. She doesn't even know she's got it yet, is it today? But that's what she was working towards. But they sought her out because they lost their last one, she didn't come from there. So that's, I think a done deal at this point. As long as everyone, motion to agree to assessors. Okay. And now the preliminary budget discussion. So my apologies for the error in that dollar amount for the 231. I do have that corrected for the fire department to be a total of $340,000, correct? That's the plug-in budget and then we'll negotiate the rest of it.
That's right.
At negotiation for the contract, okay. So anything else that was on here, I believe for 2025 preliminary? I think I covered everything and had it changed by the bookkeeper in the accounting firm after our last meeting of this. Did anybody notice anything after I came back?
I did review it quite.
Okay, was there something?
Not that, no, not at all. I just, I know Fred's a little bit better than the numbers and I went through it and it was everything that we had discussed.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I didn't.
Again, sometimes the numbers can get a little confused and that's why I.
So with this, do you have a copy of this in the audience? There were several copies left over there.
No, they're gone.
Oh.
It's not written in English.
What's that? With your approval, I could change the assessor back to $18,000, which, 18, no, it was like $14,000. Take her back to the 18.6 that she was? Or no?
I'm sorry, Candy, what was it? Do you want to?
She had 18.6 and she requested 19. We approved it because of whatever, but she's getting that in her office hours. She said we could take her back to what her previous.
So then just leave it at that, then. Right, if she's, she's good at working with that.
Okay, well, I have to just change it in here though. So no, don't come back. Nothing else standing out to anybody? Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
The state aid consolidated highway.
Hang on one second.
That's on page 518.
518, okay. Revenues? Yes, okay.
We're going from 124, 836 to 175? Are they raising us that much?
What was that? I don't have it.
It was state aid consolidated highway aid, DA 3501, does that make some any clue?
I got that from, I'm not sure that was plugged in.
It just seemed like a big increase to me.
Well, that's, that's derived from, it's up 50,000.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
That's the chips.
Did something change with what they're paying us?
Um.
Then it's the chips.
The only thing I know, I know that the state's cutting back on there.
They're cutting down?
What it is, but I can't tell you anything else right off the top of my head.
So how do we do that? How do we find that?
This came from the bookkeeper from somewhere. Did you have any?
Well, that would be, there's 50 grand.
It's a rep, yeah, coming in, the difference going in and out. This is, yeah, I have it on. Candy, does the laptop have it? It, it is on, yeah, if you want to pull it up, go ahead.
This way we don't have to.
Yeah, go, it's, it's on there, okay.
I'm thinking for.
At least that's the note I had written was the chips.
Yeah, I don't know what that is. I have to look at it.
So that. I don't have my, so you didn't give me that, that didn't go, go in at that meeting that we attended then, right? Or I wouldn't have known where to get it unless you had it, I think.
I don't, I don't know what it is.
You can't answer that either, okay. So I will double check that then with the bookkeeper.
The document.
It is, I'm sorry, what was it?
Is that the document, draft 2025 preliminary?
Um, it is probably, yes.
Yes, it is.
Yep.
Right there, so we go to page five and. Page five, what is the number?
47.
Yeah. What was the number? That was the.
DA 3501.
So it's 3501, 202.
You know what?
Because those are revenues.
They're revenues? I'm wondering, I'm just wondering if they took a middle of the road based on the actual for 22 and 23? Budgeted, all the chips hasn't come in yet this year, does it? No, that's, no. So we're estimating a low, well, estimate for what's coming in for 2024. So that is middle of the road between where we're at this year coming in and 224 of what came in the year before. So it's a very conservative estimate.
And 2024, will we receive any more of that before the end of the year?
Yeah, so this is a moving down, so I think there are more.
So that won't be as big a difference as it is right now.
I follow you, yeah. So sorry, I didn't have that answered right off, sorry. So it is still conservative based on what actually came in in 22 or 23. So we should be fine.
If I hear you right, we're expecting more in 24, hopefully something that we got in 23.
And that's what she was saying, it's revenue coming in, so that only, that only helps us then.
Yeah, correct, yes, yes, but, but the estimate, tentative estimate where it came from, now that I'm looking at it, would be based on the two actuals from the year before and not knowing what we're gonna finalize this year with already having 124 in for the year. Okay? Yep. So do I need to check anything more with them, you think?
No.
No, quick question, thank you for challenging. So with some of the changes that were made with the highway fund, what you'll see is from the tentative to the preliminary, there's $26,000 that's gonna be coming out of the unexpected balance to help offset the increase that we have, okay? Instead of levying it onto taxes.
Big number, please.
Pardon me?
Big number.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're still on five, go. In highway, at the very bottom, unexpected balance. I'm just trying to explain a couple of things that I found because I've always wondered about these things. So that change from tentative, that's 26 there. Fire, this meeting's really about finalizing the fire stuff.
Yep.
You know, I think we did, we went through it pretty thoroughly at the last one. I just wanna make sure that I didn't have any errors before we set the here, the public hearing, which needs to be, when is our public hearing before the tax cap?
I was under the impression it was gonna be November 13th, our next board meeting.
Just wanna.
Because I waited to set that, I waited to post that just because I.
Did you wait, it's still waited?
Yeah.
You haven't done it, okay. Only because in reading this, there's something about the Thursday after Election Day, which we might have to meet to do it. Yes, hang on. Let's see, the timetable, what's the town's contribution?
Something about the Thursday.
That shall be, okay, all this needs to be done with this timetable in mind. The town board is required to have a public hearing on the preliminary budget. That should be held on or before the Thursday following the general election.
So this is the preliminary budget, though?
This is the preliminary budget.
So we meant that criteria, huh?
No, we need to have it before the town board meeting of the Wednesday before, or Wednesday after.
So you're saying that we have to have, excuse me, so Election Day is on Tuesday, we have to have a meeting on Wednesday?
What's their Thursday? On or before the Thursday following, this is where it's.
So planning board, that's their.
That's their Wednesday. Which they've been bungled before, but I know that they have things on their agenda to fix.
So that would be the.
Does anybody have a problem with setting preliminary budget hearing for Thursday, the?
November 7th or 7th.
I don't, can we do it, can we do it at 6:00 again, or everybody good with that? Um. Whatever, it don't matter to me, I just.
Split the difference?
I don't know.
Let's do it at 7:00, let's just do it on the 6th and 7th.
It's the hearing, we should be, let's see. There needs to be notice of the public hearing and it needs to be published within these five days between the date of publication and the date of the hearing, which that's two weeks away, correct? So we have plenty of time for that. Time, date, location. And then the tax levy limit, the tax cap. We'll keep that hearing for the following Wednesday.
Does that need to be a special meeting of some kind or that can just be our regular?
That can be a word.
Right, I think that can be a regular town board.
Yes. Slowly place the question.
You said Sunday, not Thursday?
On or before the Thursday following the general election. The town board holds a public hearing on the preliminary budget. Or we adjourn it from day to day, but not past November 15th. Just get it over with at this point, I think.
So if you adjourn it day to day?
We're not gonna do that. Let's just get, we don't need to adjourn it unless somebody, somebody couldn't be here.
Yeah, but they have to meet every day to adjourn. Oh, right.
Right.
Well, let's just do it on the Thursday the 7th.
Fred, you're okay with the Thursday, I know you're busy on Thursday.
What, Saturday, what was it?
I was just making sure, I know Fred's got big plans on Thursday, so I'm gonna make sure.
Our angel will roll on the 3/3.
Oh, okay.
Taking that before you come. Okay, does that work for everybody then? So we'll have the public hearing.
On the 7th, Candy?
On the 7th.
7th, then 7th.
7th.
7th at 7.
Daylight savings, Jeff, maybe still hunt a little bit before we count.
Is that what you was waiting for?
That's what's the little test.
Seriously.
That guy, not that one.
Um, and then.
Never ruined the whole afternoon, huh?
We won't do that, I'll throw ours to it.
Don't stick one just before daylight, on a daybreak.
Yeah, we'll call it that, Fred, it'll be late.
Um, for the tax cap override, sorry to keep doing that, but that's a, it's a whole process. So I've got the portal opened up to submit it when the time comes. Actually Christina will do it once we finalize everything, okay?
Does there need to be a motion to stop that meeting or anything? Or am I thinking it's?
No, that's okay, make a motion to stop the public hearing for November 7th at 7:00 PM.
For.
Public hearing of the preliminary budget to pass the preliminary.
So Candy's making a motion, I second that.
Thank you.
Aye.
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 Um, aye. Did anybody have any questions about anything else? Did you understand it better than I have in the past? You guys have all seen it.
It's, I don't, I'm saying a little more now, they literally can't get it.
I mean, I've always been overwhelmed by it, I'm honest, I believe, so. Did anybody in the audience have a question about the budgets as they were? Audience?
On the fire side?
No.
Overall.
Overall.
So what are we looking at for it? I don't know if it's on page or whatnot.
Go to the left, you're not gonna see it all because it's not.
It's not, it's not.
No.
Yeah, she got that all over here.
Here, you can have this, my worksheet, which shows the, my misunderstood amount before the ambulance. That's before the ambulance is at again, okay?
Okay. So what are we looking at for, and again, in layman's terms in regards to percentage and dollar amount for an individual in town? What is the increased percentage in dollar amount?
Well, on there, you have, I copied.
With, with the new modifications, with.
The new one, I don't have that because it's gotta be.
We gotta.
Yeah, we gotta recalculate it.
It's gotta be recalculated.
But the only difference, Fred, was that 30,000, no, 30.
It's $30,000.
It's $30,000, right, so it would be.
Because that didn't get.
No, it's $90,000 more.
90, so it's.
No, it was going from two.
And what was in the budget? What we had in there, it's now $90,000 more.
What about the one that I gave you that I passed, is that?
Oh, the 285?
The 310?
This one over here or?
The second page, the one that I just handed out because I had it calculated.
Can I do the 310 because the 30,000 one is already included because?
I misunderstood what they were requesting.
She's got the 310 there, she just had a VHS workbook.
So we can see what it broke down to, so you can see the tax implications on the right, which is that last page that I ran. Which is also a copy on the computer of that too. If you go out to the downloads.
Yep.
It's that other one, it's the same, it's a copy of that.
And you're saying the last page?
No, not that one, the other download that was right before or after it, up at the top.
That's the one I opened up originally.
No, the next one then.
This one here, okay, that's the one I just opened here.
I can't answer that now. I can't see it from here.
It'll be recalculated from the next week.
It'll be recalculated because it will have you posted online before the public hearing. So we'll get that on as soon as I get these over to Christina and the notice can go up and this document go on. So we've made a motion, we've approved this as we've just discussed for the changes to be made, right? You might forget some else, Jeff.
All right, it's a motion, not a resolution.
It's just an action, so, yeah, so which we did.
So Jeff, you're at, so for motion to approve, Jeff?
Yes, I'm second that.
Aye. Don't favor, aye. We've got lots of motions here, I think we're covered on all this, so of agreeing.
And that's the motion to accept.
The preliminary with the modifications that we just made, which were mostly the fire district and the salary for the assessor. Is that, I just wanna make sure we're not missing anything else. You're the one that's, you've been here, you've done this a lot, Jeff, so. And Fred, getting back to the sort of things, did we miss anything else that, at this point? This is my first rodeo, so. So with that, that's all we need to meet for tonight. And thank you very much for coming in to have this discussion with the fire department. And this way, I think it was productive and, and I just wanna move forward with them knowing what's looming out in front of us at the county level and the state level and has to be.
Candy, I think, and I, I agree too, and I think we made it perfectly clear there that they are doing, you know, what they are.
They are.
And I have, I have a good feeling that they are doing what they have to do. And again, it's just a tough situation that you watch these guys volunteer their time.
I sat out there through all these.
No, I got you. That being said, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
My second. Aye, don't favor. Thank you.